7 o'clock, 7:10, 7:20, 7:30, 7:40, and 7:50. Ongoing business we have as-built for Sherwood Drive, revised signed plans for Dunkin' Donuts, and general discussion for Franklin Street Solar Array, and 395 Plymouth Street Form A to be submitted along with bills. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Seconded.
Seconded?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, as far as the bill goes, we have a minute before we can start the public hearing. You guys previously motioned to approve this bill, but we forgot to sign it, so I just need signatures on that.
Yes.
We have to read the public hearing then we make a motion.
Make a motion to suspend the hearing and open for the public?
For each note.
They'll read the notes, then open.
Can I first activate the motion to suspend the regular meeting?
Yep.
Make a motion to suspend the regular planning board meeting to open for notice of public hearing for the amendment for estate lots to see if the town will vote to amend the Code of Town of Halifax, Chapter 167-16, zoning estate lots by deleting the following: The planning board is the special permit granting authority. Each submission to the board should and will be considered on its own merit and specific applicability. The plans generated for consideration should strictly adhere to the criteria set forth for plans not requiring approval. Section 235-6 of the Halifax Code.
Do you have a motion to open the hearing? Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
The gist of this is just to remove the special permit component of this, right?
Right.
Yes. Eliminating that extra hurdle, even though we still have to review it as part of the A&R process.
Right.
And the whole reason for putting that in there actually is that there was another paragraph that was removed a number of years ago specifically saying a special permit was needed. For whatever reasons, back when that was done, no one bothered to remove this paragraph, which also referred to a special permit. So there was an intent obviously to remove the need for a special permit. This is cleaning up what was left over.
Any discussion?
Based on the information, I believe it should be deleted.
Agreed.
Pretty straightforward.
Any comments from the public?
Gordon Andrews to 42nd Wall Street, is this just for a single-family home in a state lot?
Yes. Do you want to make a motion for the town meeting, for the recommendation?
Make a motion to recommend that we delete and the following, plan to vote, do I have to read that again?
No, I think we can just vote.
That we recommend to remove this section from the bylaws pertaining to estate lots.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Do we have to motion to close that public hearing, Charlie?
You can, it's your meeting.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for discussion of estate lots and open a public hearing for discussion.
You have to wait till 6:50. Don't wait?
Yeah, because you posted that hearing to the Star at that time.
Can I ask why we have to go one by one and open and close?
Because you posted that.
We could've just posted them as part of a single.
You're going to have one hearing for all subjects if you want.
I could.
Okay.
Oh, you don't tell me that.
It's all learning about for everyone.
Well, I'll do that for next time.
You're very thorough.
One of my favorites is the A&R apartments, A&R apartments, A&R apartments. It's gonna take 30 minutes.
You have a lot to fill out with all this stuff if you want, I don't have to sit here for the next 7 minutes waiting for 6:50.
All right, good.
Each one has to be.
What other things have we had on here?
I will know better about next time. I didn't know I should put them all on there.
Just because we have it on the business, what was the issue with the revised signs? Did we end up getting a copy of whether or not they were going to strike the cup and fill out your text?
Yep. Suppose we got a few minutes if you want to.
Yeah.
Right, we could get something done while we're here. Basically, the wall sign, it's going to be two by five.
And they had up to eight almost, right?
Two by eight, yeah.
Okay.
You can pass that.
And that's gonna be the one that's projected back, the halo light?
Yes. And this one?
And that's okay with Rob too?
Uh, I believe so.
Yeah, so it looks like they did not add one on the street.
They did not, yeah. So basically what we discussed at the last meeting, they just revised it, they cut this down a little bit, and they show it up like they discussed. And then this one is just revise on the wording.
Enter and exit only, okay. And they were also gonna get rid of one of them, weren't they?
Yep, one of the onings.
Or no, the signs.
Yes, yes, they did not submit anything. Here's the new segment if you want to.
Did Tedeschi add another sign? Because they have the enter on the exit only, and then they put a do not add.
Yeah, so it's right there. It's now 106, yeah, they'll just have the two.
So those are interlinked, so this is handling the same thing.
On top of that.
It seemed like it was just an add, it wasn't really necessary. I don't think that's gonna get a lot used.
Because it's on the fault of the road, it's kind of a place at that point.
Yeah.
So my wife was saying, I haven't been down there lately, but she was saying there's a big retaining wall there along the edge, which feels like people are gonna drive off a cliff as you're driving in there. I don't remember seeing a big retaining wall on the edge.
Well, you know, I know there was on this.
Yeah, there is all around it.
I didn't think there was gonna be one between the Stop and Shop though.
But this is Stop and Shop's land, so they're not filling this in.
Right.
Did I make it back to us on the?
That was quick.
Trying.
Is he AC, huh, Charlie?
No. He's waiting.
Can you hear him?
Yeah.
I don't think he can, he's sitting on his phone twice.
It's gonna get noisy in here, so we may have to speak louder.
Have we received any more information on Sherwood Drive?
Other than the Asbough one?
In between the next two?
And so what, Ralph, what happens when you send it along? Do you cut it off after 10 minutes?
No. It's just we can't open it.
Got it.
It's basically that, and he was gonna send it to the fourth, uh, first doctor for review for first reading seconds. Guys, we'll get it quickly, you still got a couple of minutes.
Detention basin is still running in the back a little bit. I don't see the back air lately. And the road's still soft and between the sidewalk and the trees there, there's dirt that's spilling out into the road there still.
Yeah, and that's in this section here?
Yeah, and on this end where the road gets kinda steep, it all ruts out and the dirt's getting washed out into the street a little bit. But it is rutted up back here on the back edge of the detention basin.
Okay.
Okay, it came in 6:50. I make a motion to end the public hearing for estate lots and open a public hearing to see if the town will vote to amend the Code of the Town of Halifax, Chapter 167-7, zoning schedule of use regulations by making the following changes. Specific use regulations, multifamily. To delete, it is required that any multifamily development complex proposed hereunder shall locate each building on an individual lot which will have continuous frontage on a public or private way.
Do you have a motion, is there a second?
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, we'll now open the hearing. I guess the question I have is who's proposing this?
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen? Do they want to speak to this?
Sure, there can be ones who provide any reason why that exists, that section exists. For instance, Twin Lakes and Halifax Mel's both operate without the need for any lot lines, and no one has given any reasoning when we've had any discussions about this to why that section bylaws this, and why that would improve the situation for residents of Halifax by having it there.
Okay. This came in after Twin Lakes and the other condo project.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure. No one's provided a reason.
So that's why it was added.
Again, no one's provided a reason as to why it is in there.
Okay.
Simply saying what the pathology is doesn't provide the reason why it's there.
I believe with all the other regulations that they have to adhere to, I believe deleting that would clarify and make the whole process much easier.
Well, I kinda disagree because there's nothing else in there that says anything about frontage for that, for a multifamily, number one. Number two, when subdivision control came in, it was to eliminate multiple houses on separate lots, and we can't do it for single-family homes. And the way this is going right now, and the interpretations that have been made here, is you don't even need frontage. So this doesn't make any sense to take it out. It doesn't make any sense to attack this bylaw one paragraph at a time either. We are in court right now, this is in litigation. I don't think right now is the time to even touch it.
Well, my question is, is again, no one's provided any information.
I see no need for it to be there. I think if anything, it's only caused confusion for us and for everyone involved. I see no reason for that to be in there. I don't think that that helps the town, or I don't think it streamlines the process, or makes it clear and easy to figure out the intent of the bylaws. I think that only adds confusion, which it has in the past, and we all are aware of the fact that it's added confusion in the past.
Yeah, and I think one of the problems here is, the way people want to read it is that you can do a multifamily and you don't need lot lines because they think that a condo project is that. But our bylaw says that each building needs to be on a separate lot, so you have to go through subdivision control. So this, taking this out, means that you do not have to meet subdivision control in this town. And that's why when Twin Lakes and the other condo project came in, this was added afterwards to eliminate that.
No, that's only for a proposed multifamily development. That doesn't, that does not attack all lots or all proposals. That's only for those proposed in multifamily.
Correct, because the other lots are already protected.
When the planning board did its research in putting this in, what did it find out about what other communities do for multifamily projects?
They're all over the place.
So, again, so since they're all over the place, it's not a matter of protection, it seems to be a matter of denial.
But what I have not seen is anybody from the town come forward and say that we have a problem with this. I see this coming down, I see this coming.
I'm gonna say that right now, then. I'm gonna say that you've got a problem.
Problems with the interpretation, the problem's not with the bylaw.
But the problem is, is it's tough to interpret when you add this to all the other bylaws.
It's not tough to interpret. The interpretation is pretty easy. You got it from Attorney Huxton when he went to the zoning board. He said you have to have frontage for each building, and you have to have each building on a separate lot. There is no problem with the interpretation. The interpretation coming out of the building inspector's office is where the problem is.
You know what, if you're gonna get personal.
That's where it came in.
Because that's your interpretation, so.
Whoa, 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 hold on a second.
Hold on, excuse me. If we could stop.
We're talking about a bylaw change, that's it.
Hey, all questions have come through the board.
So what is the frontage requirement for a multifamily law? What is the frontage requirement if you allow this to go forward? Because the interpretation that was given at the zoning board is that there's zero frontage requirement. So why would you take a single-family lot to build a house? You have to have 150 feet of frontage. But a multifamily, there's no frontage requirement. Can you do it over right away? Because you're gonna end up developing all sorts of things, all behind people's homes.
Mr. Chairman, I want some to kind of, Dan? I'm on the zoning board, and we just recently had an issue with this, and it is very confusing. And I think one of the reasons is, and I pointed it out at the zoning board meeting, is people intend to change multifamily and condo. Okay? We can't do it, they're two different animals. Condos are on one lot, as a master deed, by definition. So either we specify multifamily development has to be on single lots, or we don't, and condominiums don't. It's that simple. And that's how it works, there's a master deed for condos, and that's how it works. How are you gonna say condos have to be on separate lots? I don't understand that.
But it kind of is a multifamily development, though.
No, they're not, they're two separate things.
But how is it different?
Multifamily development is separate houses sold to individuals who hold the title and the deed. Condos, you don't own the land, you own the building, and the land's under a master deed. So they're not interchangeable.
So the problem is, is that the whole bylaw needs to be taken a look at. We don't, I am not for carving up our bylaws by pulling out this thing and that thing, because there isn't anybody that's come forward and said exactly what this is going to do when you take that out.
How do you build condos?
How do you build them?
Are we excluding condos in town?
We have a definition of condos in our bylaw, and multifamily has no definition in the building code, it doesn't exist.
Then that's what we need to add to the bylaw, we need to add definition to it. By carving out our bylaws isn't gonna solve the problem. The problem is, if you can't understand the bylaw, then we need to change the bylaw. The whole bylaw, not little pieces at a time.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I disagree. I think the fact that you have a lot line in a parcel of land that's not subject to subdivision control is ludicrous. The fact that you have lot lines, you have lot lines and subdivision control. You create a lot, you build a house on it, all right? For some strange reason, this language got in there.
It's not a strange reason, it's there.
Let me finish. The language is there, and some of this language came over from the master when they did a master plan, and maybe that's where the language come from, but you've been around subdivision control. You put individual houses on lots with lot lines. You don't put condos, and you don't put multiple family dwellings. You have some merit that the bylaw needs to be changed. I think this is a step in the right direction to get the bylaw changed so that it eliminates that confusion.
And I agree. I would disagree with that.
And I would further make the point that if this were to stay, then the argument could be made that each one of these lots that gets created has to be 10 acres in size, because that's what the regulations say.
Yeah, because when we have.
That's not, that's not the interpretation.
But that's what it says in the zoning.
No, it says a parcel, a parcel has to be 10 acres. Each lot is different. It says a parcel, so when you look up, it says parcel, parcel has to be 10 acres. That's what it says.
Charlie?
Multifamily development, from the definitions, development of three or more dwelling units on a single lot of land under what ownership is not.
Look at 167-7E2A.
Well, then the problem.
This is the problem.
The problem, so you can't pick and choose which one you're gonna say is the right one. And as much as I appreciate the planning board's interest in reforming the zoning bylaw, the planning board has not, has had an opportunity to do so. And it is in fact others that are bringing four items to bring to the planning board. The planning board had genuine interest in giving a special amendment to deal with these subjects. The planning board had that opportunity, it decided not to for whatever it chooses.
Mr. Chairman, that's totally disingenuous, because the selectmen have been talking since September about talking about starting a bylaw committee to look at zoning. And it's not until recently that the selectmen started looking at adding members to that ad hoc committee. So it's disingenuous to say.
I'm trying to avoid moving away from the discussion.
No, no.
It's disingenuous to say that a meeting took place in September, another one took place in January, it's disingenuous to say that the planning board wasn't involved in that, because the planning board was invited and went to that. The selectmen dragged a fee and didn't put together the committee to look at the zoning.
Joe?
The selectmen have not received anything in writing from the planning board or the zoning board of appeals yet indicating that one or more members are interested in serving on the bylaw committee.
I have said so numerous times.
I've said, they've gotten no piece of paper from anybody from the planning board or the zoning board of appeals.
So when you personally learn of something, Mr. Chairman, when you personally learn that somebody wants to be involved, that's not good enough?
It hasn't been good enough for the board of selectmen.
Okay.
Do we want to take a vote?
No, we're gonna finish the discussion.
All right, I think my concern with the whole thing is that you're, I think you said it best, Charlie, is you're picking and choosing, and what made you pick this section specifically? Because it's a conflict.
It's a conflict.
I understand.
All those that have been coming into the planning board, and we're dealing with the consequences of that section.
Right. Well, if you delete a different section, then this one would stand, and I guess that's why.
But this is clearly the one that adds confusion.
Not if you, well, if you're doing separate lots and it goes under subdivision control, then you'd take away the single lot requirement.
Would we have the issue with the Halifax trits? Right? They already had, they had all the requirements for the building, they had the requirements based on when they added the extra parcel, and they had the correct square footage for the amount of units and all that. Then they came back and told them that they had to add what I believe the lot lines were for legal description.
Right, well, the lot lines make creation of different buildings on every lot with their setbacks, and controls that. You take away the separate lots, then they don't have setbacks anymore from each other, too.
Yeah, I don't.
But I think the whole point of a multifamily development is to have multiple buildings, multiple on a single lot.
I believe that those lines that we can refer to once as lot lines were more for legal description, not saying that that lot conforms completely to.
Yeah, I think having lot lines is irrelevant.
Yeah, I believe so.
As long as you have a parcel that meets the requirements of what the parcel.
Then what's the frontage?
The frontage, the way the zoning's written, any minimum lot in the agricultural residential district has to be 40,000 square feet with 150 feet of frontage. That's what I would interpret being an eligible lot with a 10-acre minimum for the multifamily to be buildable on. And then the number of units is dictated by the size of the lot. That's how I would introduce it. And then the lot line aspect of it makes it a lot more confusing, because then all of a sudden you have to create a road, and each lot then has to have the frontage for each building that's within that community, and then each one of those lots could be construed as to requiring 10 acres.
You know, what it says is, is you need a 10-acre parcel, and then from there, you can do a multifamily development, of which you would create those lots, and you would have frontage.
Okay, I stopped this.
Mr. Chairman, if the lot had 150 feet of frontage, then you could subdivide that land, because you require 110 feet for a subdivision.
Right.
So if the lot has to be 150 feet, why wouldn't you subdivide it and put them on separate lots?
Because you could get more homes than a multifamily development when you don't have a dedicated right of way.
So how's that different for the town, that you can get more homes?
It's a function of the geometry of the parcels. The whole point of having a multifamily section is so that you can do multifamily development on lots that are suitable for that.
Precisely.
But in the town of Halifax, our whole bylaw is set up for one family per 40,000 square feet. That is the basis of our bylaw. I don't care how you cut it, it's business, it's residential, it's multifamily. It's 40,000 per unit.
Right. But having lot lines doesn't create 40,000 per unit. So if that's the issue that you have, this clearly does not solve that or help that at all.
That just eliminates multifamily.
But in order to meet a multifamily, you have to have a minimum of 10 acres, and you can only have one unit per acre of that development. So it does conform to that.
Again, back to your 40,000, how does this help your cause?
I'm not looking for my cause.
Or you're saying it's an issue about the square footage? I don't see how this helps that.
No, what I'm talking about is density. Everybody kinda thinks that multifamily is you're gonna put a lot more houses in a small area.
Yeah, but no, 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 the density's already under, if you need 10 acres for 10 units, then that's actually larger than you're providing more area per house, right?
But in order to do a multifamily.
One acre is larger than 40,000 square feet, I don't understand.
In order to do a multifamily development, not one parcel, but to do a development where you could split that up into lots, you have to have over 10 acres.
Yeah.
You are limited to one unit per acre.
Okay.
So it doesn't make any difference if you have to put in a road and subdivide that and make lots, then you put in a unit that's. make lots, then you put in a unit that's got five units in it, you can do that. You could take a 10 acre parcel, create two lots, put five units in one building, five in the other and have two lots.
But each lot that has to be 40,000--
But your argument of density is no good in this conversation. Your thing of density is that the thing should be based on 40,000 square feet. We're saying it should be based on an acre, which is larger than 40,000 square feet. The density issue is not true.
What do you mean it's not true? I said our town is 40,000 square--
An acre is larger. So if we needed an acre, then now it's larger. So your density is now less. This is clear, simple math.
Chairman, if you put two, if you took that, took eight parcels, that's 10 acres, you put two buildings on it, you have to have two lots. You do one building with 10 units, this one lot. The issue is the number of buildings per lot.
Why is that an issue even? Why does it matter if you have two buildings or three buildings or one building? And if you do a big, huge building with 10 units in it versus two with five each, in my opinion, two with five each might be better based on the appearance, the architectural, the scale.
If it's required that each lot have 150 feet, sure. But that's not, that hasn't been the determination of what the building inspector's office has said. Building inspector's office said that there's no frontage requirement here. So if you change this, it doesn't change that interpretation.
I don't believe that was the building inspector's interpretation. I believe that was the attorney's interpretation.
That was not the attorney's interpretation.
It was the attorney's interpretation on the zoning board's decision.
I would have to disagree. I was there and heard who said it.
Well, if you look at the zoning board's decision and their determination, you'll see it on that.
Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna debate that, but if you're gonna, if you're gonna change this bylaw, can you please change the table of densities 167-11 to add in multifamilies and change the requirement right there so it says that it's 150 feet per lot?
We can't do that because this hearing is only this paragraph and that's it. We didn't notify the town that we were gonna change something else, so we can't go into town meeting now and offer change for something else.
And I guess my argument would be that that is a use within a district and no other use has any separate frontage requirements. A lot in that district needs to have those requirements is how I would interpret it to be.
And I'd also like to clarify that 150 feet of frontage does also not help density because the 100 feet of, 150 feet of frontage does not work into consideration the configuration and the overall size of the lot. Having 150 feet of frontage does not help the density directly.
So where else does it say what the frontage is?
What is the density requirement for a multifamily?
What is the dens, not density, what is the frontage requirement for a multifamily?
No, what I'm saying is if you added the 150 feet, that doesn't necessarily--
I get it.
--create more land around the houses.
What is the frontage requirement?
If you take this paragraph out, what's the frontage?
Well, this paragraph doesn't even say it specifically. It just says that it has contiguous frontage.
I don't believe each lot should have to be on, or each building should be on a lot with the frontage. I don't think that's the core of a multifamily development. I think to do that, that's, it's contradictory to allowing a multifamily development.
And I think it would be perfectly fine to augment it, to remove the lot requirement for each building per lot and then to clarify that the lot subject to multifamily development needs to have the required frontage. I think maybe that's a way to clarify some of the ambiguity.
Could be. But we can't change both.
Can we not recommend with a modification?
We certainly can.
I don't believe so. Can we, Charlie?
I'm not gonna speak to that mostly because I don't--
I don't think we can add to the bylaw without notifying the people that we were gonna add something.
I mean, if you're right, it depends on where you're talking about. If you're talking about changing the table, the answer would be no. That's for, that's, on the other hand, it doesn't mention in the table of dimensional and density regulations that specific uses have specific frontages needed. It's simply in the agricultural residential district, a lot needs 150 feet. So for a multifamily on a lot, you need 150 feet.
Okay.
And that would be my position the whole time, that you would need that frontage to have a lot be eligible for development. Unless you got relief from the zoning board for, well, actually, we can't do that, right? We can't get relief from the frontage.
Nope. They can't get a special permit unless they can meet the zoning. That's one of the requirements for the special permit. You have to meet all the zoning in that district before you can get the use permit.
Does it say that?
Yes. Charlie?
Super question thing, but you were talking about needing the frontage. If the town wanted a specific, a specific amount of frontage for a specific use, it would put it in the table. The reason I'm saying this is, for instance, for the minimum yard dimensions, it gives specific amounts for multifamily that are different than in the regular table. If it wanted a different frontage for multifamily, it would say so. It doesn't. Therefore, if the multifamily is 150 feet.
But the interpretation that we've had in the past is that it's not even that.
Well, I don't know whose interpretation and someone can show me a document saying that, I'll take a look at it. But all I can do is, I've got the bylaw in front of me right now, I've got that, I've got 167-11 for the table, there's nothing saying anything different that we need a different frontage or zero frontage for multifamily. Whereas it's very specific about, for instance, distances between buildings or distance from the lot lines for multifamily. Was if the town wanted to have a different frontage, it would say so, it doesn't.
And also, if we could just exclude the "I heard, I interpreted" because the town isn't considered, we don't care what's talked around at the coffee shop. We need to know what's been proposed to the town, talked about, brought in front of the selectmen or another board. As far as, it seems like we're going over this hearsay and nobody's talking about where it was said or how it was said. That's irrelevant.
The confusion for me is the last, last time this came up with zoning, with the zoning board of appeals, was the end interpretation on the side of leave that bylaw as it is right now, is if you have 10 acres, you're gonna only put one building on it. So you have--
But how many units can you have?
10.
10. But does that make sense? No. Doesn't make sense.
If that's what it says, then--
Well, can you reread, can you reread the bylaw? Can you reread that?
It is a requirement, the multifamily development complex proposed hereunder shall locate each building on an individual lot which shall have continuous frontage on a public or private way.
And I think that's even more ambiguous because I'm not even saying what the frontage needs to be, it just says you need frontage.
But like Charlie said, you know, the table doesn't designate multifamily different, so that would be--
But that, if someone's claiming a zero or some other amount of frontage needed, I would say that person's incorrect unless they can provide evidence otherwise.
I don't think it's the best use of the land, which is what we look at, to say you're gonna only put one building on 10 acres. I don't think that's the best use of the land. And I don't think that's what the intent was.
Well, I think it was the intent, okay? And the intent at the time that this bylaw came in was to stop the condos. That's why it came in.
I thought you had said that this came in after the condos.
Right, it came in to stop them.
To stop them and more.
So stop, not stop those condos, stop future?
No, no, future. So, and you know, I've been on the planning board for quite a while. I was on the master plan study committee. We had a lot of discussions. We had discussions about cluster zoning. Nobody in the town wanted to go towards cluster zoning. I'm not saying that this is my thought that we shouldn't have higher density, but that's what we have to work with. You know, if times have changed and now everybody wants to change this so that we have cluster zoning and allow less street frontage, you know, maybe now's the time to do it. But, you know, I think that Charlie had put forward that, you know, they were looking for a bylaw study committee. I'm willing to go on that. I've been on it in the past, we just couldn't pull up, we never could get anybody from the private sector to come on board. It was always board members and it never went anywhere. But, you know, maybe now is the time to take a look at these things. Joe?
So if the reason it went in, and what's, we're admitting right to the number of situation, people didn't want condos, that's why it went. If that's the reason, I'm not saying it's legit or not, but if that's the reason, that's the reason. Because I haven't heard anything from anybody else in the time here as to why that exists.
And we haven't had any.
So it really comes down to, do we want to allow condo developments in Halifax or not?
Exactly.
Or at least condo developments that have multiple buildings. Because you could have such, you know, if we're gonna force the issue, you're gonna have one 10 unit building instead of two 5 unit buildings.
Am I correct in thinking that the town probably as a whole would think that five, two resident buildings would be better than one building with 10? I believe, I don't know if anyone else feels differently or, because that's a big part. So if anyone does, if we all believe that five buildings with two homes each is better than one building with 10, then we should strike this because it helps that. If that's how we all feel, I haven't heard anyone say that they would rather see one huge building with 10 apartments in it. I don't think I'll ever hear that. So in order to maintain what the town wants, which is most likely five, two dwelling apartment buildings, this would help that. If that's what the town wants, removing this will help the town get what they want. That is clear and simple. I've not heard any opposition to that.
Mr. Chairman, I am completely opposed to that. So there you've heard opposition.
So you believe that one large building with 10 apartments is better than five with two?
No, I believe if you wanted to do five, if you wanted two, five units, they should be on several lots. They should be on several lots. If you have 150 feet of frontage, there's no reason why you can't subdivide. Put in a road and put frontage to those two buildings so we can get tax dollars from chapter 90 that increase the number, the number of miles that we have in town. Because we're gonna have to maintain that for those residents that are coming in, right? So the residents coming in, we have to maintain the number of roads that they use, right?
If I could, what you're saying is, is you want more road and more frontage, which creates more maintenance and more issue.
Yes.
Which is more difficult for the town to maintain. So that is contraproduptive to what you would like. You would like less road, less maintenance, lower taxes. By creating larger roads with larger maintenance, you create higher taxes. That is very simple and I think we can all agree on that. More road, more taxes, more expense.
So I'm the chairman of the finance committee, that's absolutely not correct.
Okay, so you're saying it costs more money to maintain a short road, Mr. Finance Committee?
We're not maintaining the roads, right? So what you're doing is you're taking funds, you're taking funds, right? We're taking funds in on the chapter 90, right? So if you add a new road, you add new buildings, right? You at least get some benefit from that. Because those people that moved into town are gonna use all the roads in town, right? So at least you're getting some dollar value for the roads that--
If anyone agrees with that or with what I just said, then maybe I'm in the wrong place because larger roads are more expensive.
Mr. Chairman, through you two, the finance committee chair, what are the three components of chapter 94?
The three components? It's the number of people that live in town, the number of miles in town, and the type of road that it is.
Number of people, number of vehicles, miles of road. You'll increase the number of people, you'll increase the number of vehicles, you won't increase the number of miles of road. You'll have, so your costs, because you're gonna have to maintain that additional piece of road, aren't there. But you're gonna get the benefit of additional vehicles and additional people.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. Can you tell me how much expense it would be to the town to maintain a private entrance to a condo that the town doesn't assume?
Could I tell you what?
How much cost to the town to maintain a private road to a condo, a private entrance to a condo that they maintain by themselves?
I think that's pretty much clear, isn't it? If it's private, it's private.
So if it's a condo and it's maintained by the condo association, it's no cost to the town.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if you're gonna change this and you're gonna have, you're gonna get, you're gonna go away from subdivision control, with what Mark's trying to say is you could accomplish that, you could go get a multifamily, a duplex, special permit for each one of the, each one of the lots within the subdivision. You could do two--
And a special permit?
Yes.
Yeah, special permit, that's what special permits are for, right?
You could do that.
Special situations.
So you could have five, five different lots and each unit could have a special permit. And that would take care of what you're trying to do. So we already have that within the bylaws.
Unless you want to build something with more than two units. Duplex is not a multifamily. So if you want to build a three unit or a twin lake style development, couldn't physically do that now.
But you can do that with what's available right now within the bylaw.
You wouldn't because each one of those buildings would have to be on 10 acres.
No. Each building would have to be on 10 acres.
Duplex is not multifamily.
Twin lakes has three or four units in a building, right?
Twin lakes.
Yeah. So you wouldn't be able to do that style of multifamily housing regulations.
Which was the intent.
I don't necessarily agree that it's--
Well, I'm not saying I agree or whatever, but that was the intent of the bylaw.
Yes. Yeah, so I think to that point, maybe I wasn't around when it was introduced and it seems like it's not--
It's necessarily gonna get the entire problem.
Anybody else have anything to add?
Larry? I think that my only, my main concern is that killing one section doesn't mitigate the entire problem. It may work towards a better situation, but I don't know. I think more sections need to be edited to fix what--
But do you think that not editing this helps? Do you think not changing this is positive?
No.
Or do you believe that if we do this change and more changes, we're--
Right.
I understand--
The problem with making a single change is you might invite other problems instead of taking the problem as a whole and solving the problem as a whole. To take one piece and take it out could create more problems down the road.
I don't see, I don't see it that way. I see, I see there's a problem, we have a solution or we have a fixed part of the problem. I think that's a step in the right direction. I don't think it's like, oh, I can't mow the whole lawn in one day, so I won't do the front. Like that's, probably bad.
Terrible.
It's still the same thing, right? Like, oh, I can't do all of it and I'll do, do what you can at the time, right? That's what we all want to do. Do what we can.
It's like saying I can't mow the lawn, but I'll stop with scissors.
No, it's just, oh, I can't do the whole thing, you can't do some, like, that's, I just disagree with that.
Chairman, I agree with Mark is saying that if you're brought up doing a huge problem, make a dozen changes, big changes, nothing will ever be done anytime. And I think this, one small change is in the positive steps. I think it makes a better use of the land. I wouldn't want to see a light town, I've been here 40 years, a ton of huge buildings. The one that's looking like rock, no offense.
Could I have your name and your address?
My name is Kevin John, 16 Lantai Lane. I'd rather see, you know, smaller units, multifamily, duplexes, whichever. If a guy's got 10 acres, he can only build 10 houses, fine, but don't restrict them into a bunch of little blocks where now they can't build those houses. Don't start adding more and more public roads that we have to maintain and our taxes keep going up and up. If you have a small development, like Mr. Pickrell had pointed out, and it's a condo association or association, whatever you take care of within that area, I think it benefits me-- it benefits me, my pocket, everybody else's pocket. I think it just makes a better use and a nicer-looking town for all of us.
I'm glad you agree. Any other further discussion? Larry? All right. The planning board makes recommendations at the town meeting, so at this time, if...
I would like to make a motion for the planning board to endorse this change. Recommend this change.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Two to two?
That turns into no recommendation?
Yeah. Okay. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. And open up the next one, which is... What time are we at? Seven o'clock?
Alternative energy?
Anyone read that in? Anyone read that in?
Yeah, just a, just a motion. Motion to close.
Yeah, we just need a second.
Just a second?
And a motion to open public hearing on, for the time being, the alternate energy system, C167-7D8, in the industrial 2 district, change N to Y.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So now we're open to public hearing on the alternative energy. Now, do we have any discussion? On the board?
I'd like to know why it's been changed. Maybe that's why.
Well, I explained, tried to explain what was happening. Understate law would not allow to prohibit alternate energy systems in any area of Halifax. We don't have to allow them. For whatever reasons, again, back when Dyer's rule of Europe, the town decided they weren't going to allow them in one parcel of land out at the old landfill over in the bridge water line. We actually got an, not an application, but certainly an indication of interest in development parcel for solar. And what we're set, we've been put in a situation is we've got an antiquated bylaw that technically Rob would have to say no, which means it gets appealed, which the ZBA would have to say no, would have to agree with Rob, because it's very clear, which means that we got a wonderful court case out of it, which we all need. So let's get a change so that it matches state law.
And that's in the industrial 2 zone?
Yeah.
That's it. Let's face it, I've got a recommendation and explanation ahead.
Is there any discussion among the public? More discussion here? That's it?
That's, we'll deal with that.
Is there a motion for recommendation?
Make a motion to recommendation the change.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to close that public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the previous speaker.
Two seconds? Somebody want to read in the next one?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
No, we're going to mute it.
You want to add it?
Just a second.
Yeah.
That's odd. Why is that?
Okay. Want to read it?
Make a motion to open the public hearing to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Halifax, chapter 167-7, schedule of use regulations for commercial, indoor, or outdoor amusements, recreation places, or places of assembly, to allow commercial, outdoor amusements, recreation places, or places of assembly by special permit from the Board of Appeals in the agricultural-residential district.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Is there a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Again, Charlie, is this something the Selectmen are proposing?
Yes. Basically, we're trying to build, as we can't about it, with the mudfest situation, where both everyone involved in terms of the board and the developer is interested in having a agreed-upon legal mechanism so that we could go through a special permitting process for uses like this. It would, there'd be a number of requirements, they're listed in the text of the proposed bylaw, so it's not simply, it still be a special permit, it would be as a right, it would be restrictions on the number of days, hours, no alcohol, public safety, public health precautions, and things like that. It would open it up to all agricultural residential parcels in town, but again, only those of a certain acreage and such. And it still wouldn't limit it to a certain number of days on any of those parcels. So it's not a blank expected permit, 365 days a year. Given our circumstances, you know, it's been reviewed by council, it's been reviewed by the board, they felt this was a good way of propering the situation and resolving it. And I understand that people might be wary of the situation on other parcels besides the one where mudfest exists right now, but we can't spot some. And it still, as I said, needs to go through the special permitting process. And I don't think necessarily there'd be many owners of property interested in doing something, given the limitations that are there. The other thing is that, according to the other point, in terms of, you know, obviously there's a lawsuit involved in this right now, and my understanding is that it would help resolve that lawsuit also, so that you have a mutual agreement of both sides.
Any discussion?
I have a, yeah. The chairman, I was actually, one of the Selectment meetings, it was actually the zoning Board of Appeals who changed my, my feeling on that, where I at first thought it should be a right, but I believe by giving it by special permit by the Board of Appeals does give the chance to have an individual look at it, and, because I believe would also give a chance for any residents near it that would be impacted to have a chance to voice their opinion.
So my question would be where the origin of the alcohol restriction comes from and what the rationale for that is?
In terms of talking with council, in terms of talking with the Board Selectmen, and that there seem to be no need. The current, the current mudfest, for instance, doesn't allow alcohol. They never ask for anything, like a one-day license or anything like that. They are perfectly happy running the event without it. We don't see the need for, therefore, for anybody else running an outdoor entertainment event to have an alcohol license, whether it's one day or some, they need a one-day or some sort of special license like that.
But can you still get a separate license if you're doing some sort of outdoor restaurant type of event, or you want to serve wine and beer, whatnot?
You wouldn't be allowed it as part of this event. So even if you had a caterer come in to do serving of alcohol at that event, they wouldn't be allowed to do so because you're only there because of the event. Now, if someone, you know, that's what, so if you're having an event like this, I don't mean just mudfest, let's say you're having a concert.
Yep.
You wouldn't be able, and wanted to go through the permitting process, and were able to get the special permit necessary, you wouldn't be able to sell alcohol at this event.
If you did a nonprofit type of event, would that not be considered commercial and then you would?
Well, it's not, it's not commercial versus not commercial. It's, the use is outdoor entertainment. Doesn't matter whether it's a commercial firm that is hosting or promoting the event or non-commercial firm.
Anything else? Larry?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I'm not for against one way or the other, I just want to put some stuff out there. I think that if this was to happen in the future, my contention would be because it's still an assembly use, that it should go for site plan review, to at least address any temporary structures, parking, handicap parking, entrance, egress and ingress. So as far as that's concerned, I think that should be something that should be looked at.
Is that something that we could add to this or not?
Well, no, because you have a site plan review section already in the bylaw. The building inspector...
We're just saying that it needs to be included there?
Well, no, what I'm, I think Rob can tell me a lot of face, but what Rob is saying is that if someone came in for the use permit, Rob would say to that person, you want to do this, you're going to have to have site plan review also. Here's the site plan section of the bylaw, I believe it applies nicely.
I'm a high 10% opposed to this for a few reasons. First off, people think that they're talking to a lot of people in town, they think they're voting for the mudfest. And what they're actually voting for is they're voting to vote away some of their property rights. So in residential agricultural zones, right now, these types of commercial events, it's not like Halifax lights or anything like that, somebody making money. People have an expectation, I've been in town for 25, 30 years, something like that, I know where to look. But, you know, everybody has expectations, always using paying taxes, that you're not going to be living next to a commercial entity. And I realize right now we're only talking about two days, but we don't know who's going to be on the board in the future. We don't know if somebody's going to try to increase these days in the future, but this is kind of a foot-in-the-door bylaw. And this is not hypothetical. Remember, the genesis of all this was there was a two, a two or three-day concert with up to 5,000 people a day, right on 106. And you have 500 homes right across the street. And not one person I talked to in that place was on 500, I'm going to swear to you, want this.
Want, want this?
Want this. Okay, want this bylaw, because of the effects it might have on their neighborhoods over there. We also don't have any noise ordinances. So there's no restriction on how much noise these events could make. And if we look at the, what's allowed at entertainment, it's a huge amount of activities. Now, I appreciate why they're trying to do, they're trying to negate this lawsuit, but the system is not broken, the lawsuit is actually part of the system. The question here is, is the mudfest agricultural or is it commercial? There is no reason to change the bylaw. If it's ruled that it's agricultural, then people in town have voted away their right, the absolute protection, for no reason. So in my opinion, we let this go full, and, and who knows? Maybe this won't even, this might be a moot point anyway. I just can't see voting our rights, our property rights away to do this. I can't see that.
Can I just ask again? You said that the people you asked for on that 500 people were for this bylaw?
Against it.
Oh, I thought you said they were...
No, against it. Plus, if you remember last year about this time, you had a huge amount of people here pretty much against it.
Charlie?
Yeah, just to correct the previous speaker, one of the stipulations, in fact, included in the proposed bylaws, maximum noise level of slushes shall be established by the special permit granted authority. So that would be within the powers of the zoning board of appeals to say that the noise couldn't be over a certain dose of level.
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification through you to the town administrator. The way this would be set up with a special permit, if the town was to run into issues, unforeseen problems, would the special permit be revoked?
I don't know that special permits can be revoked. I know that if violations occur and they're either, and our normal procedure has been either to have the person correct the situation and let, let them continue, or the violations continue, then we go into the filing process or bring them to court. That's, we, I don't believe on our own we can revoke a special permit. And that's, but that's true of all special permits, not just this one.
If language was put in for it, we'd revoke it for real individuals.
I'd have to check the council to find out whether we can do that or not, as well as stipulations.
Mr. Chairman, is this special permit going to be issued every year for each event separately? Or is it you get your, your planning to? Or is the permit continual?
It says for up to two times in a year.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you have to just get one permit and then come in with the dates? Or can you just get one permit?
Yeah, one permit can only satisfy two events in, in one calendar year.
But does the permit continue for the following year? No.
No, it's only good for two days.
There's so many questions unanswered. Can, if it's a two-day event, which would count for the two days, can people camp overnight there because they don't want to find a hotel? What's going to happen during the night? The last time we had this meeting last year, talking about this bylaw, somebody brought up, can two people who have, let's say, three lots get together and go to the town and say, we want to run an event? There's dozens and dozens of questions that were brought up, that are legitimate questions, that it's going to be up to the zoning board of appeals. So everybody's voting away their property rights and saying, I'm going to give the decision to five people, when we might not even need to do it. Mudfest hasn't missed once yet. So I just don't see why we're doing this.
Charlie?
Well, I can't answer all the questions, because unless we get a complete list of questions, it's difficult to answer them all. But I know, for instance, that the limit for the number of hours for the event is 10 on any particular day. So the camping, since it's associated with the event, wouldn't be allowed overnight, since it would fall within the 10 hours. As far as the restriction of, the question of, we have one, one lot, it says each parcel has to be at least five acres in size. So that, for instance, if you had two lots, it's not going to represent, that were two and a half acres each, you wouldn't be able to afford three or two acres, for five of them, one acres.
Another issue that was brought last year by a couple of other people, has anybody done a study on what's it going to be like to have 5,000 people in the summertime, maybe on a weekend? What's that going to do to 106?
I think that could be part of the special permit process, couldn't be a traffic impact analysis and a parking assessment and all that.
I would pretty agree. I mean, this is why we, there are stipulations in there dealing with public safety and public health. And this is why it's a special permit, not a use by right, in that the, not just the barrier of a supermajority for by votes is required, but in, under state statute, special permits must meet just some general criteria to allow them to go forward. And that's true for all special permits, not just this.
The only reason I and others have asked these questions is just to point out that these and many other questions come up, and you might not like the answer you get and the event happens. So why vote your protection away when we have a perfectly good system in place that should go forward? And, and if it's just about the mudfest, which, let's face it, that's what genesis of this was, let's let the process play out and see what happens.
All right. Just so I understand, you're saying because of the fact that mudfest can still fall into agricultural and allow it through that, you're saying to not do this, and if mudfest passes through agricultural, then it gets its permit through that?
I guess, Charlie, but I guess what I'm saying is if it's, if it's deemed that the mudfest falls into agricultural, then it's allowed by use.
Okay.
There is a longer punch, which are concerned, because if we don't reach this agreement, and in fact, the court's ruled that mudfest is agricultural in nature.
Oh, then we can't...
Then all we have is unlimited, if anybody has, can connect any of them. Oh, I'm going to throw weddings every weekend. I'm going to throw a concert and call it forming. Well, 5,000 people don't need special permit, don't need anything about that at all.
I think that ruling would only be for the mudfest, and the next person would have to go to court. I don't think that that's going to be a one hit.
It isn't. It's not a ruling. No. That would cite precedents.
Concerned zoning board of appeals has already ruled in favor that mudfest is an agricultural event. I think it would be very difficult to show that a wedding or a concert on a... I think it would be very difficult to show that a wedding or a concert on a farm or other agricultural lot would be very difficult to show that that's not agricultural.
So the burden of proving it's agriculture at that point would be to the zoning board of appeals, so the applicant would have to prove--
No, the person would never get there, because, unless Rob said otherwise.
They would not need to.
But Rob, you know, given that the decision of the court was that mudfest is agricultural in nature, it might be difficult for, and Rob would have to make a decision on that on a case by case basis, obviously. But it'd be much more difficult for the building inspector, whoever that is, to make a decision that if mudfest is an agricultural event, this thing, which--
Almost anything outside would fall under the same. Okay.
Just to take exception to the last speaker, there was an argument made, a direct link to why it was, I'm not saying I agree with it or not, you go back and look what they're agreeing with on, but the fact that they were removing rocks, preparing the mud, helped to plant it. So there was a direct link to whether it's legitimate or not, there was a direct link to why it was helpful to agricultural. So, no, I disagree completely with the fact that anything would be allowed.
But there's also other events in town. There's a large equestrian event that happens every year, which has nothing to do with plowing the earth or crops or anything. It's basically just due to the nature of having horses there that are active on a farm.
And that would throw lawsuit.
What, what?
I just want to make a clarification, Charlie, if you disagree. We keep saying if it's allowed is agricultural. The problem right now is we've got agricultural residential, and it's specifically not allowed. What they're claiming is the farming exemption, which by definition is agricultural, and I think this is where the confusion is, which requires a minimum of five acres now. So I don't want to confuse the fact that if we say it's allowed in agricultural, that it's only going to have an event in the backyard. That's not going to happen. You would still need a minimum of five acres for the farming exemption.
For the farming exemption, but you can farm as a use by right, not less than five acres. So--
Not under the bylaw, no, because it's not allowed.
Well, farming is allowed.
Farming's allowed.
Right. So the question's going to be whether this use is in fact part of the farming, because one of the things that's coming up, and it's not just in Massachusetts, it's another states too, is you do have farms that are now entertainment centers also. Someone asked me about the corn mazes, for instance, and whether that's going to be allowed. There's no agreement that we're dealing with an agricultural situation with a corn maze that is an add-on to the farm. As far as I know, no one, even though it's obviously commercial enterprise in the sense that it's taking money, but you hope your farm's making money too. Simply just something that's making money doesn't matter, automatically if you're commercially used. The thing is that, kind of, the examples of getting like weddings, or receptions, or meetings, or parties, or concerts, or anything else, if the, and this is going across Massachusetts, and it's going back and forth, that's how liberal their courts are going to be, I don't mean liberal versus conservative, permissive, let's put it that way, or how large an envelope the courts are going to allow, is that if these activities help support the existence of the farm, and that without those activities, the farm would not exist, those developers, those promoters might have a much stronger case to say, "This is, corn parcel allowed to have in the agricultural, I can't do agriculture unless I am this."
And just to confuse it even more, Charlie, throwing the building code in, is under farming and agricultural. As far as structures that can just center, not the open land, if they're putting up a structure, they can have up to 100 people. Once they go over that limit of 100, then it's to be used for its intended use. Whereas if they're having a wedding, then that's over 100 people that has to be used for that use as a wedding.
I think one thing too is that if we make them go for a special permit, they couldn't fall under the, "We're going to have a squash convention and look out squash, and still have your wedding, still have your party." Because we're not going to regulate what they do at these events. So once they're in under the agricultural support, or whatever they claim, we're not going to be able to regulate what they do on that property.
Yeah, and the only regulation that might come up is, which is about the entertainment permit itself, which is not a zoning permit, it's a separate permit issued by the board of selectmen. And the board has some, and same thing with the board of health, with their large event permits and such, over a certain number of people, you need to get the large event from the board of health, it doesn't matter what the actual use is. So, but it's not, it doesn't necessarily go through, there are problems with First Amendment restricting people's right to assembly, right to, their rights to assemble for a particular reason. And that, you know, so that the entertainment, live entertainment, we can't be reasonably restrictive to the point of saying that we can't put in such restrictions that would prevent someone from holding an event. We can put in reasonable restrictions, but if we still allow for--
Any other comments? We are ruled. So because we're farming by right in Halifax now, then anybody can farm--
Well, that's, the farming, the right--
Right, right.
Bylaw has no effect on zoning, period. It's over here in its own place, under, Rob again, correct me, this written, the five acre exemption is what's clear. You can always farm. There may be restrictions under five acres that, you know, for whether public safety or the building code or something like that, that we can restrict or regulate, I guess is a better way of putting it, how you farm on your smaller than five acres. But outside of five acres, a lot of those restrictions go out window. For instance, if somebody built a barn on a parcel that's-- at some point, they might have to worry about sprinklers, they might have to worry about the building code itself from building a barn, but we're going to have to allow the barn, no matter how big the barn is, as an example. That's, so the right to farm by law has no effect on zoning. It's all, all the exemption restrictions or non-restrictions are inside the state statute of 48.
So even if this came back and they said that you have a right to have this because it's connected with farming, that's not, it's not going to open it up for those five acre parcels? Is that what you're saying? In other words, if the court came back and said--
In the mudfest--
Yeah, yeah, it comes under agriculture.
I think they would find it on five, five acres or more would be what I would feel would happen, but I can't, I can't--
Right.
--determine that.
Because again, we can restrict or regulate agriculture on less than five acres, we can't do whatever greater than five acres.
Are you saying that the building code, we can regulate the size of a building if it's being used for farming on a parcel larger than five acres?
As long as it follows the building code. I mean, rock control--
It's got different parameters than normal stuff.
Even if it were like an indoor farming type facility?
Yeah, they have to follow the code, but there's different parameters.
But I ask Charlie a question.
So what, I guess what we're saying is, anything over five acres, if you wish to farm it, you are therefore, no matter what zone you're in, you're therefore considered agricultural.
The use is agricultural.
The use is agricultural.
It's not agricultural zone--
No, no. The use is agricultural, no matter what zone you're in.
As long as you--
As long as you're doing--
Right, as long as you're actively farming.
Right, right. And then that applies to the right to farm, and that applies.
Well, again, the right to farm is, I won't go into the philosoph, the philosophy of the right to farm by law, but it has no effect whatsoever. If, pick a community out here, if it doesn't have a right to farm by law, people still are allowed after a parcel larger than five acres, the same right to farm as they do where in Halifax. The right to farm by law was mostly a, we want to say to people, "Look, you're living in an area that has farms. We'll work with you on solving problems where people who live near farms interact with that farm's parcel, whether it smells, whether it's noise, whatever else it is. But we're saying to you people who are coming into Halifax, or living in the Halifax, that you have a right, that people have a right to farm in Halifax."
And fall under the five acre exemption, there are certain parameters on the master in the law that they have to sell a certain amount, for certain monetary amount every year, so there are different parameters within that also.
Mr. Chairman, through you to either the building inspector or Charlie, if, if, I mean, if the lawsuit moves forward and this bylaw doesn't pass, is there anything limiting the number of times that they can have the event?
No.
So if this lawsuit goes forward and this does pass, will that limit it to twice in a year?
No, well, I'm sorry.
If they get the agricultural--
If they get the agricultural, if the court's ruling, the mudfest is an agricultural activity, they won't be limited to the number of days.
So he has a right.
Even if this passes?
If this passes, okay, well, this is--
That's, that's--
Well, my, I think, I said earlier that both parties in this lawsuit have an interest in having this settled by our bylaws, in that both parties have indicated that if it is, this bylaw is passed, then we'll follow through using the bylaw, not that the suit will be, the parties would say, "Okay, fine, we're going to use this bylaw to allow for mudfest," not have to run through the suit and come to a decision for that.
Okay. But in the future, if somebody did have a parcel that's over five acres, they could, and they're using it for farming, they have some of that, they could use it for farming, we were discussing, they could go get an agricultural exemption?
No, this is the point. I mean, this is, and this is where it gets tricky for any building inspector zoning enforcement officer, as to what's considered an agricultural use. I gave the corn maze as an example, that the consensus across the state is a corn maze is going to be an agricultural use, despite the fact that it's, you're not growing corn or producing corn for the product of corn, you built a corn maze now that people are using for entertainment purposes. Nevertheless, I think there's not, either there's not case law or enough decisions that a corn maze is considered an agricultural use, an adjunct to the farm itself.
Can I elaborate on that a little bit, Charlie? Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The corn maze, in my opinion, they're using, they're actually using the corn itself to create the maze. They're growing the corn, they'll be using the corn to sell, and in the meantime, they're using the corn to create the maze to go. There's also been other situations where it's been found that dairy farmers, for example, have set up an ice cream shop, or ice cream, now, you can find them around here. Well, there was a link that the cows produce to build, to produce the ice cream. So there's the link for the ice cream store to be, and allow agricultural use. How far does that go? I don't know. This is why we're here where we're at.
Okay.
But you don't have to be agricultural. Anybody with five acres would fall under this ruling in the court. So it's not just the two parties concerned, if, excuse me, the by, if the bylaw passes, it's not just going to affect the two parties of the lawsuit, anybody in town, regardless of the zone, am I correct?
No, agricultural residential--
Agricultural residential zone.
Industrial, a lot of commercial--
It's allowed in some other--
Yeah, it's all a lot of business.
It's all a lot of business. So in the agricultural residential zone, anybody with five acres or more could apply for two days--
Yes.
--of entertainment.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just to kind of boil it down, so I, if you, by adding this, then anyone who, anyone who did have the farm, and it was proved that it was promotion of agriculture, would not have to come in front of the zoning board of appeals. I'm just wondering, if you personally, wouldn't you rather have them come in front of you?
I would rather have that people's rights right now not be taken, not voted away. Right now, you have the absolute protection of these types of commercial events are not allowed in agricultural residential zones. Why are we doing this to us?
No, but my question would be, if it wasn't commercial, it was just a large event, the zoning board would have less control over it if we did not add this. Like, I agree with you as far as protecting the rights of the people--
I guess we're looking at the long-term implication of this. In other words, if somebody's having a party and they get a permit for a party, that's expensive, it's costing you money, you're not going to do that all the time.
Okay.
If you're having a commercial event, and you've invested in sound systems, and you've invested in bleachers and whatever else, you're a businessman, you want return on your money, you're not going to want to be going to a town meeting, spurl or down and say, "Hey, how about four? Nobody complained." Well, I know people complained three years ago, but nobody complained last year. How about four days? And how about six days? So I guess the concern of everybody that I've talked to is what's the long-term implication of this? Because now there's an incentive to have the days. It's not non-profit, it's for-profit. And that, and people have been paying taxes a long time, and I would rather have somebody say, "I want these," like what happened last year, it was so broad, they pulled the question because probably wouldn't have passed. We're setting the town up to go down something, once we allow this, we're never going to put the genie back in the bottle. And it's only going to either be more days or louder events. Who is going to force it? Who's going to stand up with a sound meeting? Nobody's going to do that. So a lot of these things aren't enforceable that we're talking about, even though they're written down. So I say let the process play out.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other discussion? Does the board want to make a recommendation? We can make it a town meeting too.
No, I'm going to make a motion to recommend.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay.
Make a motion to close.
Somebody want to do a motion?
Motion to opening a public hearing for--
The 720?
Yeah, 720. Chapter 167-7, scheduling schedule use of regulations in in-law apartments by deleting section 167-7D, 12E, substituting therefore and changing the language of the five-year renewal process, or to take any other actions relative thereto.
Okay, a motion to open the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we now have a hearing opened. Again, is this the selectman proposing?
Yes. I'm basically, I, and I think this is a part of the concept of future zoning, that in most cases, special permits go with the land, not the person, in that if you give, for instance, a special permit to a business, you're not asking if the business is sold, you know, the person, the business stays on that same parcel, obviously there are no other changes, that James selling to Jim doesn't require Jim to come in and get a new special permit. You know, in the interval, the claim order may have changed, the zoning board of appeals may have changed suddenly, well, wait a minute, you're telling me I can't run my business even though it's been there for 10 years, 15, whatever?
Charlie, can I just--
Yeah.
We're talking about the five-year renewal, not the--
Oh, yeah, I got--
Just the five--
That one's the third one on the list. Yes, you want to kind of--
I don't remember here. Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
This one's on the renewal process?
We're talking 58 then? Or 50 of the, we're talking, if you don't--
I don't have articles--
58 is after the commercial renewal agreements. We're going in order, we just talked about 57, so I'm saying 58.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, so we're just trying to remove the five-year renewal, which, which falls into what Charlie was explaining, where someone buys a property, or someone buys a business, that's how it's run, you know, they're investing in that business, they're investing in that property, how it is.
This is just a--
Yeah, so I'm saying, but it's similar, so I think the board is looking to not recommend this change.
There are three articles, and I, permission of the board and to move things along maybe would be helpful to talk about all three at the same time.
So let's open up the other two along with it? Do you want to do that?
If some--
Yeah, we could.
I don't know how many people you approve listening while in law apartments.
So that was the 720, the 730?
Okay. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Halifax, chapter 167-7, zoning, schedule use of regulations in in-law apartments by deleting 167-D12-E, and substituting therefore a review of the permit every five years.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now open for that public hearing as well.
I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Halifax, chapter 167-7, zoning, schedule use, schedule of use regulations by deleting 167-7D12D, which provides the following. D12, in-law apartment slash immediate family member accessory apartment, D, special permits for in-law apartments granted to the applicant and are not transferable with the land, substitute the following. D, special permits for in-law apartments are granted--
D, special permits for in-law apartments are granted to the property and are transferable with the land.
Okay, have a motion to open the hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, all three of these are brought by the board of selectmen, but they're informed by the building inspector myself, in a sense of, we've realized a number of problems that occurred in law apartment bylaw. This doesn't solve all of them, it's a step, I think we need a larger discussion sometime in the future, about the concept of in-law apartments, but we're trying to uncomplicate the situation for the permit holders. One of them is that it goes with the land rather than the person, in, as I was mentioning earlier, in most cases, special permits go with the parcel, not the person, in that if you change ownership to the parcel, the special permit doesn't suddenly disappear. Now, in-laws might be seemingly a weird situation, because you're assuming that the Smith family needs the in-law, the Jones family buys it, but it doesn't. But it's simply a matter of if the Jones family, you know, the property will go with the in-law, but the Jones family doesn't need to use that additional space as an in-law apartment if it doesn't want to. We, in terms of how the building code and such have evolved, for instance, we can't regulate the number of kitchens that are in one dwelling unit. So if it's one dwelling, you know, because we have a shared space, for instance, and we've got an open doorway, which is no different in reality than most people's houses, most people's houses have a shared space, AKA, most of the rooms in that house, and an open doorway someplace. What we're saying, you know, it's only gonna be more important if it, sometime in the future, where this family wants to do something different, that things would change, but they'll be still able to use, you know, if they want a second kitchen in the house, they get a second kitchen in the house. If they want an open doorway, they get an open doorway, we're not gonna restrict them. It just might not be used as an in-law, it's just used as additional space there. So that's one of them. Then we're looking at the five-year renewal question, and the problem, and talking to council, and talking to the ZDA about this, the challenge is that, and we ran into this most notably, not about in-laws, but about the special permit for a kettle in a specific location here in Halifax, that changes in the special permit require new hearings, new notices to the abutters and such. Even, and so you can't simply renew the permit without notifying the abutters, and having the ad and everything like that, because you've told the abutters at the beginning that five years from now, that special permit's going to end. You have, and if you don't give them notice that it may be extended, it's not about a special permit. So what we're trying to do is avoid having the permit holder have jumped through a lot of hoops that probably aren't necessary. One way, and I'm happy with either of them, because both of them are just better than what we've got right now, one way is that we, the permit holder is, we'll call it, both of them are reviewed, I think one of them uses the term renewed, but we'll call it a review for right now. So it's up to review the special permit, the end of five years for an in-law. The abutters get notified by the permit holder, but we don't have to necessarily have a public hearing, we don't necessarily have to have the notice in the newspaper and such. Then the board of appeals can make a decision whether they wanna move forward on renewing or not, having notified the abutters, and if there are any complaints through the building inspector's office or anything else, then they can deal with those. Another possibility is simply that, the very fact that we have a special permit still allows people to say to the building inspector, the Smith family or the Jones family, they're violating the terms of their special permit, and then the building inspector's zoning enforcement office can enforce his zoning bylaw, and if necessary, start applying them to bring them into compliance. So there's a mechanism, so that if there's a problem with a special permit, there's a remedy for that. It doesn't have to necessarily go through a full review every five years with everything I've outlined, and those to the abutters, the hearing, and the public notice into the newspaper. So we're just, I think, trying to find a less complicated way of dealing with the situation. It doesn't solve all the problems, but it's a step towards doing that, I hope.
Can I ask why there's two of them?
Because we were looking at a couple of different alternatives, didn't know whether it was the playing board or anybody else, how far people wanna go down that road in terms of public notice and such. One is, one is less public notice, one relies in essence on the fact that people can always file a complaint with the building inspector's zoning enforcement officer about the special permit, and it's not being, the stipulations aren't being met. The other requires every five years that we send a note to the abutters and say, "Hey, we're checking with you, it's been five years, you got any problems?" And see if anything results from that.
Okay.
I mean, any review or renewal of a permit for family not for profit in law apartments? With the open door policy in the, in the bylaws, it's pretty much, you're, you have a house with family in it. I don't, once it's, once the special permit's granted the first time, and all, everything's met for that, I don't, I don't see why it would ever need to be reviewed or renewed again.
I, I agree, it's, it's tough to tell someone that they can invest in their property, build an in-law apartment for a family member, and then five years later, deny them.
We're gonna do that soon, we don't...
Especially the expense, it's...
Well, my contention is, they can't deny them if it's being used for exactly what it was proposed.
But if they have to go before, isn't that a, isn't that a chance for the town to deny it?
Now, they would potentially get denied, the way it's written, they just have to comply with the conditions of the original permit.
But if they decide to buy it right, then no one would have an opportunity to deny them later, and it's, it's a large investment.
Ultimately, it's, it's the use of the structure. If you've got two separate areas that can be divided by a demise in law, whether that was what, you know, because they're supposed to have an opening, but if somebody puts a demise in law and after the fact, who's gonna know? So now you've got two separate units. So now, you have, you know, they can rent it out, or it's being sold that way, the people buying it, they don't realize it. It's ultimately the use, so if you're using, for example, if you have an in-law apartment, and you're following all the stipulations that were put in place, you're using it for what it was intended, that's the use. The minute somebody moves out and you're renting it, that's not the intended use. Now there's a problem.
But the in-laws could be renting it.
Well, that's, that's it, if they're paying money, they could be renting.
And then the other side of that whole thing is, when you have to have an opening between, you really don't have an apartment.
The whole idea and the word topic is the problem, because it's either a single family, or it's a two-family, or it's a duplex, or it's a multi-family.
It's not just a big house with two kitchens and a bunch of people?
No, it's the whole reason, it's for the opening. We're gonna keep it a single family. We have to make it appear to be a single family, so that we have the proper regress, two regresses, you know, everything that meets the building code, the fire code, as soon as you put that wall in, now it's a different animal.
Is that what the genesis of having it classified as a two-family would be, that you have different fire code regulations that you have to meet?
Yeah, that's the, demise in laws would have to be fire, fire code, and, you know, we'd have to have smokes and common monoxide detectors, and different, so it's, it's a different animal to go.
So for, we're allowed by right, would somebody be able to just kind of build a in-law apartment, not necessarily have to go through the review with the building department?
If it's an apartment...
Well, if you're building it, then...
Yeah, you still have to go through the building department.
It's only an apartment in, in the, in the fact that it has separate cooking, separate sanitation, separate living, and sleeping quarters. But it's open.
Got a question from the audience?
I think these are really good changes, or maybe they're gonna be helpful to the zoning board.
As to which?
But, yeah, 'cause I think...
Two of them are in direct conflict with each other. Well, the review.
What's that?
The review.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Do you think it should be reviewed?
I think it definitely shouldn't be a renewal process, in my opinion.
Yeah, it needs to be reviewed, just so if there was a problem, in my opinion, if there was a problem that the abutters have a time where they can voice their concern.
And so the, a review would be what exactly, I guess is my question, if I have to walk through?
Well, we're going through, well, that's gonna be part of it, I mean, the thing is that, under one of these possibilities, we're saying there's no specific notice to the abutters inside. What we're, let's see.
One's initiated by the homeowner, and the other one's initiated by the zoning inspector.
I believe the whole idea of this in-law thing was to help the inhabitants of town, that the children could live with them, their, their parents could live with them, so that you didn't actually have to create a duplex or a two-family that might be cost prohibitive, because we allow them, you can have a duplex with a special permit, two-family.
So 60 is a simple review by the zoning enforcement officer? It doesn't notify the abutters and such. Basically, the zoning enforcement officer tells them if there are problems, then the permit holder's gonna get an opportunity to correct them, if they're not correcting them, then they're gonna go through the enforcement process. If under 58, then the abutters are also parties in this and get notified and resourced. Is it, hey, mind you, anytime someone can file a complaint, but here we're being a little more proactive to the abutters at least, and saying, "Hey, just so you know, your next-door neighbor does have a special permit, if you have problems with it, you know, the five-year anniversary is up, please tell us."
That's, that's the one.
So, so conversely, the other option would just be allow it by right, and just let it happen, and even streamline it more, right? Is there any...
Well, by right, you, the in-laws by right in general?
Right.
Well, then you're gonna have to change the bylaw even more than we're proposing here, which I need to bring to you.
Right.
Well, you did leave, you did leave the, a little bit of room in this one, right? And any other action?
I mean, technically, how I'll put this, Rob, you can tell me if wrong, but technically, since we don't, since you can't regulate the number of kitchens, and people have open spaces, and people have shared living spaces in their houses, in a regular one-family house, technically, someone could have their mother-in-law, father-in-law, whatever, however you want to find it, in the house, and he's not an in-law. But half the mother-in-law's, she likes cooking, you know, and, or he likes cooking, he's the father-in-law, you know, whatever, you know.
That's always, and again, it's always, and I, and I hate to use this, but it's always kind of the end around. Hey, oh, it's not an in-law apartment, my mother's living with me, and I, you know, she's got a separate bedroom, she's got a separate living room, she's got a separate bathroom, but, you know, she's got a little counter, but we don't have a kitchen. Now, where do you, where do you, how do you make the determination? It, it's, it's difficult.
Because you, you couldn't necessarily see it any different, I mean, we have, you know, there are places where you have several generations living in the same structure, but at those many times, if you're talking about classic double-deck or triple-deck, there are closed walls, there's not shared spaces, that, that's where the differential comes in, between this and where we've been talking about, is having the open space, the open doorway in the shared space, but that's no different, it'd be hard for you to say, how is this actually in terms of a use, different over here versus over here where there's no in-law, you know, there's no mother-in-law, father-in-law, yet, hey, my kid lives over there in that bedroom. Okay, what's, what's the difference? I mean...
I'll tell you from my experience, this is where it becomes a problem for the homeowner. If somebody comes in and buys it, now they assume they have an apartment, technically, it's, it's an illegal apartment. So now they're renting it out, they're actually giving people possession to their home. Now they're becoming a landlord, which is a whole different set of laws. People now have possession to your house, and if they don't pay rent, well, now they're in your house, you can't get them out.
Because there's no definition of what an in-law apartment is in here, is that part of it?
There's a definition of an in-law apartment.
Which has to have a shared space, open doorway... But, but in essence, it's just an extension of the house.
It could rent it.
Is that different, yes? Renting the...
Here's your magic word, rent. You're not, you can't rent to the in-law.
Because there's bylaws for that, too, as hard and boring.
But you could have your in-laws stay.
Yes. Then what is the point? I mean, you know, if, if you say it's an apartment, but you, but you can't close it off, it's just an extension of the house. Yes. And you're, and you're saying, if your in-laws are there, you have to come get a special permit. Which is why, when I, I preface this, that we, you know, your point well-taken earlier about other things, we have to have a bigger discussion, but again, this is, we have special permits right now for in-laws, we're trying to deal with the current situation and try making it less complicated for those permit holders. Trying to streamline it. Why, you know, what we might do in the future might even streamline it some more, but it's a step. So getting back to the three proposals we have here. The consensus is, the abutters should be notified, then you go with Article, I think...
The one that says review?
No.
You go with 58 and 59, if you don't, if you don't wanna notify the abutters with 59.
720.
Where are you seeing 58 at? We don't have those.
All right, so 58 is 720, the one that starts at 720 is now number 58.
Well, it's all... 720 is 58?
Yep. So 740...
I think 59 is the 740.
Okay, 59 is 740.
Right, Dr. Charles?
I guess.
Article 59.
Right.
Okay.
Then the other one for the review is Article 60.
Okay.
Then, you know, communicate a little more.
And including, including the in-laws, it's Article 58.
Yes.
Not the in-law, sorry, the abutters.
Yes.
So everybody in the audience is clear?
Sure they are, but, can't, they don't... It's probably less of use of all the sheets.
All right. So 58, you're gonna send out a notice?
Yes.
Yes, notice would be notified, yes. 60... The abutters are not notified. They just have to know it. Then, yeah, but the CEO, if they have to know it, and the CEO would do an inspection and such, to make sure that the stipulations, I mean, under 58, we'll still do that, but under 60, the, the difference really is the abutters.
And 58, so 58 also, it's on the owner to notify the town, and they could very well not do that, and the town would not be aware that they need to be notified.
Right now, right now, the town is notifying them every five years.
Yeah. I think that works better than the homeowners, you can't leave them up to that.
It's in the bylaw.
Just, I just wanna say, because most of the time, we are continuously having to chase them.
Because they need a permit, in this case, they would just need to comply.
Well, yeah, but they're not responding, so...
Correct.
So at the end of five years, the special permit's done? Right now, that, you know, they, technically, they have to come back and get a new special permit for another five years, because the bylaw's specific, it's not a three-year, it's not a three-and-a-half, it's a five. There's no...
But assuming everything's the same, it should be renewed.
Right. As long as there's no other in-laws moving.
But, but what about the, if it opens it up, and then say you have an, an abutter that has a disagreement with that person, there's a personality conflict, could, could that person show up at the zoning board meeting, cause enough stink, and then all of a sudden this person's denied?
Yes, and then our, our suspect will see herself in court.
Yeah, so by eliminating the, that renewal, that's...
Look at the stipulations, and see the criteria, see that they meet the criteria and say, hey, they've, they've done everything they're supposed to do, they should be completed.
So if these changes go into effect, say we go to 60, then you're gonna send a notice out to everybody, abutter, saying that you're no longer gonna be notified?
No, no, that's 58.
No, I know, I, no, I know where, where the chair is going with that, which is basically, we're not gonna sit, you know, he's asking, okay, we've got three in-law apartments right now in town, I don't know what the number is, we call three, and there's 10 abutters for each one, we're not gonna send out notices to the 300... Just like the notice. We're not gonna send out, yeah, we're telling the 3,000 households right now, in the, right, we won't send a special note to the 300 households saying, "Hey, this bylaw changed, you have an in-law apartment near you, you're not gonna be notified in five years, or three years, or whenever the permit is up, and we're telling you that now, you'll never hear from us again." But any new ones, they're not gonna get that indication that they're gonna be notified any... Well, if there's a new, if there's a new in-law permit, they're gonna still, the normal stuff happens. Right, but, but the, it's gonna be said at that meeting, that the only thing they have to do is get a review. Then the, the abutters aren't gonna be told that they're gonna be notified. It would have to be up to the...
The zoning enforcement officer is gonna actually go out on an inspection.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm talking about, if you have a public hearing here
Then the abusers aren't going to be told that they're going to be notified.
It would have to be up to the...
The zoning enforcement officer is going to actually go out on an inspection.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm talking about if you have a public hearing here right now for a special permit for an in-law apartment, and the room was filled.
Yes.
Everybody's going to know that in five years, the only thing they have to do is get a review.
I don't know.
Well, it's going to be in the by...
Well, it's in the bylaw, but you're saying, will everybody know that?
Well, they're not going to be... They're not going to be told they're going to be notified.
If you play with that and you say, okay, Smith moves out, Jones moves in during the next five years. Jones was never even at the original hearing. Jones probably doesn't even know. And Jones isn't going to get a separate notice when they buy their property that, hey, there's a special permit for an in-law apartment two doors down.
My point was, we're not going to notify everybody if this changes.
But I guess the next follow-up question there is, this would only apply to new special permits granted, or does it also retroactively apply to current ones that are within that five-year window?
All of them.
I would say we're... My interpretation is it's applying to the current ones also.
Okay, so even though their special permit will have been written that says they need to come back and...
We're going to... I'm going to really need to be talking to council about how we handle it, because it's a weird situation in that, so let's say we pass this in a couple of weeks. So in June, someone's... We'll call it August, we'll wait for the AG's office to say, okay. Permit comes up. Do they have to get a new permit, or can they go through this process?
This process?
We're hoping to this process, but I think we're going to need to talk to council and make sure.
They might have to go through one more, renewal and review.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion?
Do you have a reference on one versus the other?
Yes, I do.
What pray tells that different?
I would rather see the one we just called sixty, which was the seven-thirty P.M. And one that says looking to recommend. That would be the one that I would prefer, the review of a permit. I don't think... I think that you stop bringing in notifications and a hassle. People are less likely to notify you that they're having an in-law apartment, where it's something that they can get away with pretty much by right, just in talking to you. Because you can't limit... Charlie, right? You can't limit... As long as the kitchens, bedrooms, bathrooms, living space. So you can make these houses in this exact fashion with no special permit.
You have to be careful how you shake and limit. If I go into a dwelling, and I see three kitchens, three separate living areas, and they're all petitioned off, it's...
As long as it's open.
But it's to use. Are they actually renting it out?
Well, that's it. Well, the renting is the key here. I think as long as they're not renting, in my opinion, it should be by right, but...
Separation.
Yeah. I'm going to... I'm going to... I'm going to find it... It'd be an interesting situation if I am somebody who wants to share a living space with two other people or two other groups of people, whatever, a three-family, that everybody actually can walk in and out of everybody else's space. I don't think most people want to be living that way, despite the three kitchens.
Right.
We probably won't run into that.
Well, I know, I might be surprised, yes. We got all flavors.
Well, we're not looking to take care of everybody.
No.
All right, can we start with that for fifty-eight?
All right. I'll make a motion to not recommend Article fifty-eight. The chapter one-sixty-seven dash seven, zoning schedule use regulations in law apartments by deleting section one-sixty-seven dash seven, D-12-E and substituting therefore, and changing the language of the five-year renewal process to take or to take any other action thereto.
I have a motion to not recommend.
I have a second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that goes down as out for sixty?
That was out for fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
And I would like to make a motion to recommend Article fifty-nine?
Article sixty.
Okay, Article sixty, I'm going to recommend both, so... To see if the town will amend the code, chapter one-sixty-seven dash seven, zoning schedule use regulations in law apartments by deleting one-sixty-seven D dot twelve E and substituting therefore, a review of the permit every five years.
Okay, I have a motion to recommend Article sixty. Is there a second?
A second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose?
Can I... I think there's missing a number in the actual way the language it's written there, it just doesn't matter formality. It says the CEO shall inspect the structure and ensure requirements of bylaw, chapter one-sixty-seven dash seven, D-A through C. It should be...
That should just be a title.
Yeah, seven D twelve, A through C. And then, yeah, it happens again the next sentence as well. Is that the kind of thing that we can change on the fly?
That was a recommendation that could change.
Yes.
Otherwise, aye.
Okay. Uh, final one.
Do you want to favor that?
We did, we all favored that one.
What's the next one? Fifty-eight?
The last one's Article fifty-nine.
Yep.
Make a motion to recommend, uh, first half is the same. See if the town will amend the code, Town of Halifax, chapter one-sixty-seven dash seven, zoning schedule use regulations by deleting one-sixty-seven dash seven dot D dot twelve D, which provides the following, D twelve, in-law apartment, immediate family member accessory apartment. D, special permits for in-law apartments are granted to the applicant and are not transferable with the land, substituting with the following, special permits for in-law apartments are granted to the property and are transferable with the land.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion to close the hearings.
A motion to close the public hearings?
For those three.
For those three articles?
I have a second.
Make a motion to open a public hearing to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Halifax, chapter one-sixty-seven dash seven, zoning schedule use regulations marijuana establishment to make the following change, to allow marijuana establishments by special permit from the Board of Appeals in the business slash commercial district.
Yeah, this is not the select and select.
I have a motion to open the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
So I'm not going to speak unless you have a technical question.
Okay. Okay, is the applicant here?
Yeah, the bottom maker.
Okay, would you like to speak to the applicant?
I will actually have Patrick speak.
Okay.
Sorry, my name is Patrick Johnson. I'm the CEO of Curaleaf Massachusetts, a personal friend of Mr. Maker. Also a local resident on the south shore of the Pecker Park town over. Currently operating in Spencer, Hanover. We just opened a second one in Oxford, Massachusetts. I have spoken... I worked with Mr. Maker for a while now, trying to find an alternate location, potentially on the south shore, as Hanover potentially is very much against the use of adult use slash recreational. And I know the Town of Halifax voted in favor of it, so when Mr. Maker came to me and proposed that we should consider looking at Halifax. As such, Mr. Maker and I met with administrator Seeling and discussed within the possibility of amending, sorry, chapter one-sixty-seven slash dash seven, the zoning schedule use, as you mentioned, to also consider marijuana establishments for adult use slash recreational use in the business zone. We did the same thing in Oxford. We met very closely with the police chief there, and after talking in detail with them there, we all felt that it makes more sense to have it in a well-lit area, easy accessible, versus kind of tucking it away in industrial zone. And also for finding a potential location that suits the purposes. It would be much easier in the business zone. So that's why we're bringing that to your consideration, to potentially amend it as proposed.
Can I ask the question with what the uses are, just because it only says marijuana establishment?
Yeah.
No, actually, that's... Yeah, they just want to change it, so it is allowed.
Because it's allowed in the town. So where they're allowed to set up is where... What's in question? My question is, what is the establishment? Is it a bar? Is it...
Sorry, I lost it.
Is it a bar? Like, what is the establishment?
The definition per the new Cannabis Control Commission, marijuana establishment is pretty broad. I am...
That's what I'm asking, what you're...
No, I agree. So I'm just here for the purpose of a retail, and defining it as brick-and-mortar dispensary store. I know the town's been approached by a cultivation site and so forth, so from my... From our organization's perspective, it's just for retail.
Okay, retail.
Yes. But as the state defines it, includes, you know, laboratories and manufacturing and R&amp;D labs and a lot of other things.
Yeah. Your thing is just for retail?
It's just a retail store. And for whatever it's worth, we've also spoke pretty briefly with Mr. Seeling on the whole post-agreement, and we proposed what that would mean to the town as well financially, so...
I know we've discussed it as a board, and when we originally set up for the medical marijuana establishment, it was zoned into the industrial. And I think as a board, we kind of felt that the retail part should be in the business commercial zone. I think it gives the best chance for that business to thrive, and it just makes more sense. I'm not sure if we all felt that. I know unfortunately Jonathan, who's not here, agreed with me, but...
And as a point of clarification, is this for recreational as well as medical use?
It's for me both.
What's the timeline on the state allowing the recreational use?
Uh, I have two answers to that. I think the state will initially allow the sale of recreational starting July first, and that completely depends on which applicants are ready at that point in time.
Of this year?
Of this year. So I don't want to add too much to detail, you can stop me when I'm setting up. On April seventeenth is when people were first allowed to apply for it. And that's only for those applicants who have a priority status, such as ourselves. And that's really those applicants who already have established a dispensary or they've got a provisional license and they're working on setting it up. So us, along with, let's call it any other applicants, have a priority status, which means we can now apply. We've applied in Oxford, because that town is for recreational, so we've applied for retail adult use license there, as well as a cultivation in Webster, which is where we cultivate. So we have a couple of applications in for cultivation and manufacturing and one retail dispensary. The state has supposedly said that there's... They're going to take... They want to try to process everybody in time for July first, because that's what they're going to need to do. So it's really up to the quality of the applications that come forth, whether or not somebody's going to be licensed by July first. If you're going to ask me, because it takes a lot of coordination between the state, the applicant, and the local town government, I would... I'm probably guessing that the first one to open, the state's probably going to be sometime in late July, probably not July first, on that date. For us, potentially, if we were to move here, if all... If it's going to take a little while, obviously, we have to secure the location, we have to do renovation, we have to work with all, you know, the planning board, the selectmen, and everybody. And we don't even know if the state's going to allow us to move. But so I think for now, before we even start this conversation, we just want to make sure that would the town consider us?
Salute us on a bit before we...
Yeah, exactly. And it's just going to be much easier for us to find a location in the business zone, and it makes more sense from a business perspective. So I think that's... This is just the first... This is the first step in what's going to be many conversations.
And like you had mentioned, the Town of Halifax voted quite positively for this. They were actually one of the towns around here that seemed to be all for it.
Yeah, I agree.
You had mentioned a post-agreement. What's the situation with the post-agreement? And what sort of license you have to get from the town to operate apart from the use?
I'm not sure. I want to speak in your behalf.
Yeah, you want to be speaking on my behalf. Generally, basically, it comes down to most community agreements are signed between the business and the board selection. It's more of a financial agreement. Generally, it's not... It doesn't go into the stipulations of a normal site plan or special permit. It's more of a financial agreement than anything else. The... The business can provide a community impact fee of up to three percent of the revenues of the establishment at that location. This isn't the sales tax. I'll get to the sales tax, because this is true whether it's a cultivation facility, manufacturing facility, retail store, whatever. But for the retail marijuana, the community impact fee. It's a little weird, because the state has said that the money collected has to be related to expenses that are generated by the facility with the town assistance. So for instance, let's say that we said, well, we're going to need to get another patrol officer on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So the money collected should be going towards that. Or you're going to have an increase in traffic, and you need to put a new traffic light. However, it's not as strict as some people would interpret it in that there's no requirement that every dollar spent that you receive from the community impact fee go to expenses such as those. Really, it's going to be a general receipt that comes in, and the town has a fair amount of leeway on how it wants to spend the money. We've not gotten to any point, and I'm talking about businesses, but even internally with the board selection of the base community, so to say, if we ever get this revenue stream, how should we use it? I have some suggestions, but it's really not relevant specifically for zoning by law. It'd be interesting how all that plays out, because I think the intent was for businesses not to be... But I won't say blackmail, extortion, maybe is better. Yeah, you want to come in here and operate facility, yeah, we give us lots and lots of money. How much money can we give us? And they don't say yes.
But there's a cap of three percent, maximum of three percent.
Sorry, one more point. So right now with medical, every town is doing it differently, and some is going pretty hot. And some are... I have heard one instance, they don't provide anything, so it's all across the board, so they're trying to standardize.
So for the one that we have right now, with four daughters, the cultivation and processing facilities proposal for River Street, we are... Agreement doesn't include the three percent. That doesn't... There's still property taxes, personal property taxes, things like that. For retail, you get the three percent sales tax. There's no connection with anything for that. You get the three percent sales tax, just like we get the three-quarters of one percent meals tax for the restaurants. Use it for anything you want. There's no connection.
There isn't one on that growth facility, though? It's only on retail sales?
Yeah, you don't get collect sales tax, because it's not reached the retail point. It's a retail sales tax that you get the three percent. So a cultivation facility, we can get the community impact fee, but there's no sales tax, because there's no retail sales involved in that. So that's... So what would happen is the interested applicant would come to the board selection. For instance, we're having somebody come in Tuesday for another cultivation facility. And, you know, we see how much interest there is. Okay, do we want to do this? Okay, let's try and put together a post-community agreement. We'll probably use the one we're doing with four daughters as the template. Because we don't want to have to negotiate specific tours with specific... Specialty each facility, unless there's a real need for it. So that's where we are with the post-community agreement.
So it's just that one fee, and the other one is locked in at three percent sales tax fee?
Right, for a retail facility, but only retail.
Okay.
And I think that the only thing we've kind of added, so typically, the three percent is for the... The recreational needs, we've offered the three percent for all, both medical and non-medical. Right, so...
Is there an opportunity for the town to say no if you do agree to the three percent, or is that...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because there are three... One correction I want to make. The bylaw article only addresses retail, not retail, but recreational marijuana. There is no request to change the zoning for the medical.
Yeah, correct.
So what that is...
Oh, okay. So your establishment, you were planning on selling both, correct?
Yes.
So would you like to change this proposal?
Sorry, so I guess that may be a misunderstanding between the two of us. So I think the mer... So I guess that is somewhat of an open question with the Cannabis Control Commission, whether or not everything should... Our belief is that everything controlled underneath Cannabis Control Commission eventually will... Everything will be defined as marijuana establishment. And I apologize, that's something we kind of missed on. And I apologize, that's something we kind of missed on, missed on. I don't think we're required to do medical. That is something we want to do with the patients right now. We feel like that's important. They get product without the tax, they get it 20% cheaper than anybody else. So I think that's, that's a service we want to continue to provide to the patients to use.
So there's three things that are going on either simultaneously or one after another and really on the applicant. One is the state licensing. And so various states have various types of state licenses. While the walls are rolling there and people are either preparing applications or sending applications. There are places where the town interacts on that state licensing in that we have to confirm, for instance, if the zoning allows for it at that location as an example. But we don't play a major role in the state licensing procedure. There's zoning, which any facility is going to have to go through the special permit and site plan process. Doesn't matter whether it's, whether it's cultivation, retail, manufacturing, you name it. Doesn't matter whether it's medical or recreation, it's just they're going to have to go through the special permit if they're allowed in that particular zone or the site plan or anything because they're going to be dealing with these and such. Then the authority is the host community agreement. So all those things can be happening simultaneously or one after another. So for instance, with four daughters, they can't apply yet for the state license because the time to allow for their permit hasn't come up. I believe that June 1st is the earliest they're going to be allowed because they're doing recreational only here. Host community agreement, we're just about ready to sign permits. They haven't gone to the ZBA or the paying board yet. They may be waiting to go through the state licensing procedure first to see whether they can get the state license before going to the town bodies. But all three things have to be happening and all three things have to be completed in order for them to operate.
Is there any requirement for distance away from the school?
Yes, so it's the same, there's, all they're changing is the.
It's five hundred.
It's not just schools here in Halifax, but what is the daycare?
Daycare.
Yeah.
But it just seems to make more sense to put it in the business district. I firmly believe that.
Definitely gives you more options.
It, it's better for their business plus other businesses around. We all know they thrive better when they're closer to each other to put it out in the middle of nowhere. Doesn't help anyone.
The distances in Halifax are no marijuana establishment and shall be, and it's the same as for the medical. No marijuana establishments shall be located within 500 feet of any school or childcare facility where children generally congregate or any other medical, not to medical, any other marijuana establishment, any establishment licensed for alcohol in provisions of 130 H12. Distances will be based on a straight line from the nearest property line to the nearest property line. Doesn't mention houses of worship.
I'm sorry, I think that's a state, that's a state, a state one. I think we have to comply with both, so.
So realistically, we can see something opening up in the plaza down the street this.
Well, which plaza?
The plaza where the.
Former Sedell's?
The Thomas Church. You have that plaza there where Halifax P T used to be, which was close to the school. So you can see something.
As long as it's tight, it has to be at least 500 feet.
From property line to property line, so no.
Yeah, 500 feet isn't that far.
Be pretty close to the school.
Well, that's what I mean. I don't think that, I don't think there'd be outside 500 feet.
Property line of the school to the property line of the.
Because it's only, technically it would only be the firehouse in between because the property that Shabbos Mot was, all right, is.
The bank is part of the same property.
But there's a tension in that building anyway.
Yeah, so if that, if that's the place of worship.
But if that moved, because that just came in recently. So that's kind of my concern, that you could see something that close to the elementary school.
Well, that's what we're saying.
That's what we're saying.
The only thing between those two properties is the fire department. So that's not 500 feet, that's like maybe a 100 feet.
Well, the property line of, call the street where the property line might be.
Sure.
Because the fire departments want a separate lot from the, but it's the.
The use.
However, but you're right, the call where the fence is, where the LED sign is, you're correct. It's not 500 feet from that lot line where the LED sign is to the street. It's less than that. And that's the nearest property line. So anything within that lot.
So that whole plaza is off limits.
So the cow washes would be in the zone? No, the property next to the cow wash.
Probably, most likely. I mean, obviously we don't have that measurement, but approximately.
It's a great tent of a lot, yeah.
So the only thing I would just maybe throw as consideration out, so we've obviously talked about different towns. I think Halifax is honestly the first one I'm seeing where it's such a license to pour is a requirement. And I think if we're going to even be the business district, I know there's a lot of restaurants kind of spread out the business district. So I'm not sure if that's something the town would consider potentially lifting or maybe 300 feet or whatever that ends up being. And like I said, I, we don't, we have a secured location. I just don't know if that's going to be a problem with the, with the, obviously schools, players of worship 100% agree because that's always been our, kind of our motto or, you know, something we try to.
What was that point that you said?
License to pour. License to pour. So, you know, if there's a pizza place or whatever who sells alcohol, that would eliminate us or it would just eliminate that location. And like I said, I don't know what, what options are out there. So I'm not sure if that's something the town feels really strongly about.
What is that, we don't even know what that is.
Pouring alcohol.
Yeah. So what's the separate, what's the separation? You can't have two facilities within time.
You could have the marijuana facility within 500 feet, fire feet of a place that's serving alcohol. So why in the town wouldn't have anything within 500 feet of the property?
Or be the restaurant in town.
Yeah, you're right. Where they're spaced apart, does that eliminate a lot of ports?
Get the example, the T box and.
Wait, none of them's. 58, 58 would be the closest.
So I, like I said, that's just.
Prime location.
Consider, I'm not sure what someone then gets, could be potentially discussed. I don't know if it's this meeting or a separate meeting. But like I said, places of worship, schools, 100% know this and what's about it. But I know the license to pour could potentially be an issue, looking at locations, I don't.
Well, I think if we can get past this, this will be the first step and then look at that later.
Any other discussion?
No.
Anybody from the audience?
I'm going to make a motion to request that the town vote to amend the code of the town of Halifax, chapter 167-7 zoning schedule use regulations marijuana establishment to make the following change, to allow marijuana establishments by special permit from the Board of Appeals in the Business Commercial District.
Yes, for a recommendation?
Yeah, this is for a recommendation.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
Okay, that concludes the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular scheduled planning board.
Sir, second?
Second. Thank you very much.
No, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Do you have a location where you can hide or?
You sat looking away from the restaurants.
Sedell's, I don't know if you have 500 feet from the grill 58, but I mean, that's.
It's an empty building, yeah.
That's something we've all been looking to see somebody go into.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, like I said, I think that the port thing, I just honestly, it didn't cross my mind because I've never seen it elsewhere. This morning, I was like, oh my God, they have this port thing. I did so much more than that. Every, I use Google Maps, every distance, I'm like, oh, that's like 378, 415. I'm like, uh. So I guess that's something to consider. Thank you so much for your time.
Good luck.
Take care.
It's funny, there's no restriction on that, the outdoor recreational use.
Well, it's also weird too that like you could, you could have like five miles in road stop that you couldn't, I don't know.
But you can smoke outside.
You can smoke in Halifax still?
But you can't walk down the street having a beer though, right?
Okay, what do we have?
This is 395 Franklin Street. Got a copy? Basically, they're looking to change the lot lines from a bigger estate lot to give some more contiguous uplands to the farmhouse. So you can see where the lot line kind of is right there in the back, right behind the pool. And they want to add on a little bit. Basically, they want to become a little bit more, or they want to become conforming to get 40,000 square feet of contiguous uplands.
And remove that.
Basically because they have four apartments in there right now. They're.
Wait, which, just for clarification, which building? Not these three in the back, but the.
No.
Red round in the front?
Yeah, you know when you go by the cow wash? I never even knew it was apartments. It says like the yarn company.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Weird. Yeah, that's the build.
Yeah, I know that's the building. I didn't know they had four apartments there.
Basically, well, hold on. Back in 1960, something or other, they got a special permit for four apartments. Right now, they have six.
Have they been renewing that special permit?
Have they what?
Been renewing that special permit?
Way back when, they didn't have to.
Ah, so they're grandfathered in?
So they're basically grandfathered for four, but they are running six. And they will also have a seventh out in the pool house. We have been able to get them out of the pool house. So they're looking to go back to the zoning Board of Appeals to get extension of the special permit or expand the special permit to get their six apartments. However, their attorney thinks that they, if they get this at least more conforming because they don't even have 40,000 square feet. So anyway, that's why the Form A is going to be in front of us at the next meeting on May 17th.
Sounds like they need six acres of land.
They had three buildings outside of the property.
150 feet of furniture.
I don't understand how we approve that with the.
150.
Well, this is why I bring it to the attention of you guys now so you can take a look at it. It will be before you formally at the next meeting on the 17th. So you definitely want to take a look at the plan and.
So they're looking for six, so they're going to add.
They're, they're running six right now.
But they're trying to document it and legally get approval for the six.
So they're going to add some more acreage to get six acres?
That's what they're trying to do. That's what this form is about, to get.
Because every apartment's going to have 40,000.
But that, when they first started, again, back in 1960, exactly.
That building's falling apart too, isn't it? At least it looks like it from the outside.
There are some issues, yes.
How are we allowed to keep six when they have four?
We didn't know that they were having six.
Can't we stop them?
Yeah, I think, and you got eviction and like you can't remove people that usually have that.
Their own families in an apartment, but these people have six apartments running in a building right now. And, and my, for an in-law apartment, a special permit, they have, they have to be renewed every five.
Again, this, the special permit was granted back in like 68 when there weren't as many restrictions on apartments. There was nothing.
But it's not even in law anyways. Yeah, it's for rent for profit.
So what we have before us is whether or not we are going to allow a Form A. That's what's in front of us. This is coming next meeting, May 17th, but.
But the house is off the lot too.
The house, it looks like this building is that.
So basically, again.
Possibly a shed, I don't know whose other shed that is.
They own the lot next door too, right?
The estate lot kind of that goes in the back, that is in the same name, yes.
Is it the Corcoran?
No, just the, just the my.
They also have the lot to the left-hand side, right?
No, Harrison does not own it anymore. Harrison still owns the lot to the left, but there's, it's called.
These are these people. That's who owns this thing.
PHAM, PHAM, PHAM have owned it for about five or six years now.
The farmhouse?
Yes. Yes, the big one to the back.
They don't own the one next to that?
They do not own the Harrison property.
Or this one.
Yeah, that's a separate house.
Yeah, so they just own these big ones.
That building's not even actually on.
Their property.
That looks to be correct, yeah.
And what are the external buildings in the back? Is that the chicken house?
Well, the big one is the chicken house that has the big red X on it now. And I don't even know those other X buildings were out there.
What does it mean? It's condemned when it's got the big red X?
Yeah, basically if there's a fire, the firemen will go in and miss their own lives.
Okay.
Yes, basically condemned.
Yeah, so like, yeah, they get put on notice if you have an issue, you're on air.
It might be kind of hard to see, but you also need to see that they're.
Oh, that's their subject.
They're going to have an easement with the subject that goes, yes. So there are several issues with this. I'm just giving you guys a head up for our next meeting, okay?
Okay.
Moving along.
And that was a new scepter?
Yes.
They just put on the use of property.
How does that?
Okay, and we briefly just.
Because they were all in the same name. These properties are both in the same name.
Right now, I believe it's the PHAMs.
Like the whole, that whole piece.
The whole, the.
So maybe they viewed it as more contiguous property.
Estate lot and the farmhouse.
So that doesn't make sense. Yeah, and if they did it separate, I wouldn't have expected them to be able to do that.
They should have just done a lot consolidation plan and just made it one.
Yeah, but then they wouldn't have any potential for the back.
Well, they still could, they could have carved in bedones.
Probably don't have the front, they probably don't have the upland.
Yeah, it looks like what the uplands are back here. So it's there. So they say.
I don't have the formal Form A yet. It's supposed to come to me in a week or so. This is just a copy that we were emailed, so I blew it up as best I could.
Okay.
On the agenda as well, I just wanted to quickly give you guys some information regarding 241 Franklin Street. This is the solar array.
Are we done with them?
Oh, yeah. Smoke that.
Oh, that.
Oh, this is old Spring of these times?
Franklin Street.
Yeah, this will be a microphone.
This, did we already build this?
This was, yeah, it was a couple of years ago, 2016.
Okay.
What's basically going on.
Where is it on Franklin Street?
Right now.
All right, so you know where.
Take a left onto Franklin?
You know what McKenzie Drive is? A short thing. So this McKenzie Drive is like here. So it's a little bit further down.
So you can't see this from right now?
You could see a house way out back here and this house is up close.
Okay.
So basically, there was a Form A that was approved in 2009, which is right here for, just basically a Form A. We don't believe, because we cannot find anything as far as a special permit being applied for or issued for an estate lot. Okay, so this lot is right here. And here is a dash property line. And they are now looking, or someone is looking to purchase it and put a house there. But we approved it as this and we don't believe, I still haven't been, I haven't had time to look at our meeting minutes. Don't believe that they presented this with an easement to access back here because the actual property line right now is right here. So they would not be accessing the solar panels.
Why don't they just access it over here? It looks like it's dry over here.
No, it's wet. This is all wet.
Oh, this part's wet? This is the dry finger? Okay.
Well, they'd still, it'd be very squeaky and they'd still be.
Yeah.
We tried to, just for me, tried to explore. I don't know if we did anything to the initiative, but I feel like it was brought up.
I haven't had time to look at the meeting minutes, it's been kind of busy.
It seems like they're not going to be able to.
Both.
So I'm just bringing this up for your, so you guys know what's going on because the zoning enforcement officer is going to have to make a decision when they, when they say they do come to us for a building permit.
For which part?
For this, right here.
For the house?
For the house. Because that's what we have been approached with for the past week. We've had a couple of questions about perk tests and that's how we found out about this.
Yeah, because they'll no longer have that.
They'll never have, they won't have their access.
Did they record the parcel?
I believe the parcel was recorded.
You can't have a shared drawbridge.
Can't have a shared drawbridge.
So the 70 feet is definitely.
Yeah, the other map showed it pretty clear.
Okay, yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to get the meeting minutes from when we discuss this and hopefully have them ready for, for review.
Because this is approved, right?
Yeah, so whatever this, again, it's been looked at and Plan 55, page 550, 584 is missing, which is what we think this parcel is.
What do you mean it's missing?
It's not on the reference.
Oh, okay, because it hadn't been created maybe at that time yet?
Again, we're still looking into it.
Because this says it's met 93, this book and page.
Right.
Rick Springer came in the Form A.
Yep.
And we're trying to get a build permit for that one now?
Not yet, but questions have been raised.
Surely can, but then this guy doesn't have access.
And we just told the potential buyers of the property that depending on what they're going to allow, they would basically have to come back to the board, present it with an easement. And they would have to have easements on their deeds. And then there's also like this big huge basin or something right here. And then the owners were like, well, wait a minute, I don't want to have a basin.
Yeah, that's, that would be the only thing left.
The other solar development had zero.
Right here. Here it is. See, this would be the access and then here's this basin. And they actually have that house basically being right up in here, potentially.
Is this a mistake left over from another? So this is, because this isn't built.
It's not built now, no, but that is a basin for stormwater for the.
For the access road, all right?
And the access road, yeah.
Okay.
So there's a few, again, I'm just bringing it forward to you guys just so you know about it in case something comes up.
To me, it seems like they wouldn't have any franchise.
They won't, they wouldn't be accessing the solar on their own property.
Correct.
Let me just keep finding all kinds of fun stuff.
You don't have to try so hard to find fun stuff.
We're trying not to. It just kind of jumps in front of us and then we're like, oh, now we got a research.
Could they argue it's an accessory use to the house?
No, because the solar's not on their property.
No, if they made it just one big property. Just power in the house and make it very, power in the house.
I don't know. Again, I'm just bringing it to your attention that this line should have been a solid property line and they probably should have presented it with an easement and, you know, a potentially single-family house will be going there. They, they really did not present it.
Well, when was this done? This was done in 2016?
Yep, and the Form A was 2009.
Oh, okay. Maybe they just didn't record it, so that could be wrong.
Well, that's what we believe that page, that book 55, page 584 is.
So how did we find out that it was that?
So the plan they presented.
They're trying to buy it now.
Someone asked about it.
So the plan that they presented to us was a false plan showing that they owned us.
Kind of, yeah. Yep. At the moment, it's, it's two different names, Chronicle and Springer.
Oh, I see what you're saying. We approved the solar farm based off that.
Based off that being there for access, yeah.
But we can approve things, continue if they have a purchase and sale or other agreements. They don't have to own the land to come in with an application necessarily.
Well, I mean, we've done it before where they had plans to do it and they wanted our approval and that made sense, that they wanted the approval before they went through the purchase. I thought that that was reasonable.
But it certainly.
But subdivisions you're supposed to have ownership before you come in.
But this wouldn't have been a subdivision.
Yeah.
Fun.
But they didn't present that as somebody else's property.
Yeah, no, it's presented as part of the project, right?
Yeah, well, definitely wasn't like, we don't own this, but we're going to drive it.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anything to do on this?
No, not at this time.
Just be ready.
It's just an advisory.
Prepare yourself.
Okay. And with that.
We'll show it.
Because this was a fence that they would do it, right?
Well, that would be a fence to go around the basin.
Is that a real fence or is that just like hay bales or something?
We'd have to look at the.
Is there a legend? Yeah, it says, what I said, it's just straw waddles. So it's just their erosion control.
Yeah, he does. I already have one.
You had a motion or a second?
Aye, aye.
Not a second though.
Holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.